I'll call the Shasberry School Board meeting to order at 6:01. And we'll begin with citizens' comments, if any. Nothing, okay. Moving, go ahead.
I was hoping Tim would be here. Just as an update on the traffic situation. The state of Vermont is going to allow a speed limit change in the area that we requested.
Yes, it is.
So, Tim was instrumental in having that brought out as an issue and did a great job in the presentation. And the governing board went along with it. So, we will be 25 from roughly Cleveland Avenue to the intersection of 67. That will be posted 25 miles. And there's a good indication that the town will support us in putting blinking lights at the crosswalk itself. And those will probably be on-demand lights, okay? Something that kids in the summertime or when school isn't in session can control. So, good movement in that area.
So, will there be crosswalks, push-button things to say cross, no cross? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
They'll have control. So, most of the time, it's going to be a blinking yellow light?
If it wasn't on-demand, if somebody hadn't changed it, yes, it would be a blinking light. That's as I understand it now, Jim. We left that. The governing board strongly recommended that we do some additional work, and that was one of their suggestions. So, the town was in on the process. They were at the meeting via telephone, and Karen assured us that she would continue to work with us.
So, how does this stop the traffic?
It wouldn't be a stop. It would be a, as I understand it, it would be a caution that came onto more of an alert that somebody was there.
Okay. So, they push the button and the yellow lights start blinking?
Right.
Gotcha.
Did it?
That's it.
Good job. Thank you for...
Thanks, Tim. Tim was, that's entirely Tim's project, and he did a great job. Ninety-five percent of it was being up there and having a good presentation. And Tim had put together a really strong, short PowerPoint presentation, and it struck me the points home, and they listened and came along with the idea, so.
Okay. Good. Okay. Moving on to financial, the treasures report. That was not posted today, so we don't have a treasures report.
It was not available.
Okay.
We thought we might get it by today, but I think...
No, that's fine. And we have a budget transfer request, which is enclosed. And, okay. Request of administration following budget transfers required for approval. Has everybody got a copy of that? Okay. Was I supposed to come in and sign a warrant for this, for these budget? Or did I already do it?
So, warrant? Is there warrants for the budget for that?
Uh-huh. Yeah. Good. Okay. I didn't know that, so. So, I need a motion to approve the budget transfer. So, move. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions?
Is this for July or for last year?
Yeah. Jim, you got anything? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Aye. All right. You got something?
No.
Oh, okay. All righty. Good. Okay. Okay, next is the KUNO4 tablet lease agreement. And that's right here. You want to talk a little bit about that? Jeff?
Sure. It's pretty much the same as when I was here a couple of months ago. I told you, we had two options. If we're going to go with the KUNOS instead of the Netbooks, we couldn't get it back ordered anyway. So, our options were to buy them outright from the core company, or we'd go with a lease agreement with the MLC company, the consultants, and pay a little over three years, which is roughly $10,000, and change over three years with them. And then, at the end of the lease, we could buy them for a dollar apiece. And so, we get the same product, but we just spread the payments over three years. If we went with the outright purchase of them, we'd have to come up with another, I think, five, four, or $5,000 to offset that cost. So, the NLC is looking for a forward approval resolution.
Yep.
Gives me permission to proceed with that.
I'll read this anyway. Any questions to Jeff? Okay. I'll read the resolution. Resolved that the Board of Education of the Shasberry School District, Vermont, authorizes the principal to finalize the financing of new technology with municipal leasing consultants of Grand Isles, Vermont, its agents, or assignee. The proposal is approved at a rate of 4.97%, which is fixed until July 5, 2013, after which time the rate floats until funding and will be based on the like-term swap rates. The principal of the Shasberry School District, Vermont, is hereby authorized to execute any, all, and all legal documents necessary to conclude the financing of the lease-purchase agreement. And I need to sign that, so. Motion? Do you have to have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion.
So, move.
And a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye. And I'll sign it. You'll have to have a certain pen or anything like that.
I'm aware of it.
Okay.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Does this need to be signed by Fran?
I have data. I don't see a sense to sign that or not.
Oh.
Do you want a copy?
And is there any other under financial? If not, we'll move right to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, there's the June 12 minutes.
Here's the other copy.
Need a copy of minutes? No? You see? Okay. Okay. Anything on the minutes? I did have on page two. It's line 40, the nomination of Laura Boujot, fourth grade teacher. And this is what you had emailed me on. And then, underneath that, 41, it says nomination slash authorization's none. So, I didn't understand that, but I thought we approved her at the last meeting.
Yeah, sorry. The nomination authorization was done. That was the, that was line 20, 21, and 22. That was DeZalia?
Okay.
Right.
I see.
That actually should have, I should not have, I should have let that out.
Anybody else on the minutes? Okay, we have the warrants. Warrant number 1026 and the amount of $163,111.36. And warrant 2014, the amount of $9,874.74. Any questions on those?
I don't have them. Maybe I do have them in front of me. One of the warrants had a charge of the excavator, or the excavation work for the...
2200. Yeah, I've seen that.
Right. And I know we already have had the conversation about liability or responsibility anyway for this. But I did wonder, does, about liability, does insurance cover things of this nature? And I guess we would have heard by now if it had.
Yeah.
Just if the water came in the building and soaked this floor that you had to replace, they would have covered that.
Yeah.
But they didn't, they don't cover it until it gets to the building.
And with insurance, what, we have a $5,000 deductible? Something like...
$2,500.
$2,500. Okay. Okay. Nothing else on the warrants? Okay, we also have for tonight, the long-term, wait a minute, make sure, the one-year sixth grade classroom teacher, Tom St. Hillary.
Blair.
Blair. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's taking Katie Hayden's place with her year off. So, I have, I don't know if anybody wants to look at these?
We have that.
Oh, you do have it? Okay. Any discussion?
This is just FYI. We have to vote on it.
We have to vote on it.
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah.
Yeah, we have to vote on it. Did you have one of these, Dave?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right. Hearing, no discussion. Only the motion to approve. So, move. You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
And this is just, this is a...
This is one year.
It's a, okay, it's just one year.
Sixth grade position. One year. It says right on there, one year, sixth grade classroom teacher. Okay. Let's see. I don't think we approved the minutes or the warrants, though, did we? So, only the motion on those. We should have done them all together, though. Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. That's good. That's... Next is the policy, Shasberry tuition policy. I got your email, Donna, and I tried to get it. I finally, I think I did finally get it, but I don't think it's the one with the changes from Stitzel.
The new policy?
Yeah, the tuition policy. I think I put it in the separate folder.
I got a copy here.
I got them right here. It's policy number 5705, but I didn't know. This one that was, got the July 1 draft, does that, does that have the change?
That's the most recent.
That's the most recent. So, that is the one. Okay. Everybody have a chance to look at that? Okay. And any discussion or questions before we approve it? I would assume, I put it down for adoption because I just, I figured you'd needed this ASAP.
I do. I needed it before we could proceed with it.
Oh, okay. Well, then, we need to adopt this thing tonight. And I just didn't know if there's any changes, corrections. Hopefully not.
No.
You can motion that we...
Jeff and I did discuss the sort of the thresholds that he wants to have for class sizes.
Yeah.
And made them low enough to have enough room for growth from local students, just to, and of course, he can always make adjustments as needed if he wants to admit students and feels there's room for more, but I think he put it in safe numbers.
Seen the numbers in there. So, I mean, that, so that gives you leeway.
Yeah, you've had, I've looked at your population growth the last couple of years, and you've had significant numbers come in.
Yeah.
Throughout the years.
Right.
So, yeah, you try to leave room for those people.
Good. All righty. So, there's a motion, and there's a second. Who made the second?
I made the motion. I didn't know if anybody made the second.
Second.
Okay.
Now, this is different than the non-resident tuition?
That's, Jeff's going to talk about that. That's the process.
Yeah.
He'll talk about that. Okay. All right. All in favor of the tuition policy?
To a doubt.
To a doubt?
Doubt.
Yes. Okay. You're all set there.
Go ahead with your smooth turn.
Okay. Facilities. I don't know who was talking. Are you doing facilities, Jeff?
This is a report now. We're just in the process of cleaning up everything in the building right now. Okay, they did start the heating today. Sorry to say, that's very correct. They did start the heating on this end of the building. They pulled all the old units out, and they're getting ready for the new units, which should be coming hopefully later this month or beginning next month, which will make heating costs a little less.
Mm.
This winter, yeah.
Okay. And we'll go right to the principals' report.
So, first up would be the process for commission of the tuition students. And Donna's worked very hard on this. I appreciate your help on this. The only thing that's different on this, I believe, from the last version you saw, was that we fixed the target classes for K3. It was K2, it should be K3 for school quality standards in SVSU policy and 4-6. And we said, we stated them at 15 for K3 and 20 for 4-6. The process in itself, I think the one other thing we changed was that once a child is in the system in our school, that we articulated through throughout, we also stated that if there's a sibling coming in, possibly they'll get a little pushed up the list for acceptances to tuition students above. Maybe a new tuition student doesn't have a sibling in the school. Other than that, I think it's pretty much the same, as what we saw last month.
Okay. All righty. And the security team report.
I was just going to mention that Patty Page did, number five, she did sort of secure this so that it includes the, your school in the process of admitting students when they have a 504 or an IEP, including a statement that says, "To consider whether or how the student's special needs could be met in Shasberry." So, if there are significant needs that can't be met here, you aren't obligated to invent the program, but you would, you know, be in, you would be in on the meeting to discuss whether those needs could be adequately met, and if you had sufficient staff to add students to the case.
Anybody else?
The security team report was the report that we saw last month. This was done with Jim and Jake Unrad, Jerry Crew, and Jim Marsden, and Officer Kowalski, I believe.
Kowalski, yeah.
Yeah. I know we just wanted to discuss it today. Don't know if there's any action we're going to take, just suggestions.
Wanted to get the board's idea of what they think.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I, I had a look at it yesterday. Hadn't seen, hadn't had a chance to read it before the last meeting, anyway. The communication between the office and the individual classrooms is one thing that struck me, that apparently there's not a system, a PA system, that allows that to happen.
There is a PA system. There's no phone system.
Okay. So, I don't know whether a phone, what the advantages of a phone system would be, or what the, what the problem was. It's not, from reading this, my take on it was, there wasn't a way to communicate, so I don't know why a PA system wouldn't be a way to communicate. That seemed a little bit like a shortcoming, but if there isn't, if there is a PA system, maybe there isn't a shortcoming.
I think the PA system...
Functions?
Functions most of the time. From whatever special personnel staff.
Okay.
But the PA system and the phone system.
Can you reply back for the PA system, or is it just coming from the main office to the classroom?
You can reply back, can't you? Sarah? Sarah?
PA system does work. You have to go, the PA, it's somewhat antiquated. You have to go to the door, you have to turn it, you talk. So, you're standing in front of your door while there's a crisis, holding a button, talking. They answer you back. It's kind of like a, almost walkie-talkie.
Walkie-talkie.
Glorified walkie-talkie. If there was an emergency...
Yeah.
It'd be a little bit of an iffy thing to have to depend upon. It is somewhat antiquated.
The buzzer system, we're going to continue to use?
Yes.
Like that? And that, so, somebody, whoever comes to that door out there during the day has to buzz in, and that will...
Somebody has to go around, open the door for them, and they see who they're...
Okay. Is that something that, that works? It's not a problem? And...
Hasn't been a problem as far as I've heard.
Okay. I mean, I think it's a good idea, but...
Yeah. Yeah. Some more line.
And so, on this, the highlighted areas?
Those are Jim's highlights.
Saying this is what he...
I don't, no, I don't believe, no, I don't think he's recommending those.
Okay.
I think he just highlighted some of the things that he saw in the report. It's the copy he gave me in transition.
That's right. He was going to look over and see, give his comments back of what he thought was necessary.
Does any board member have any ideas or want to do something different? Or, I think that basically covers everything, but I just didn't want to get into putting in the bulletproof, bulletproof glass and stuff like that. Somebody thinks we should do that.
I'm not ready to make this a fortress.
Yeah. No, I, I don't think so.
Can you change the poster?
If, I had mentioned to Jeff before, you know, maybe you put cameras out on the perimeter or something, if you want to do something like that. I don't know what the cost of that would be, but, you know, get them before they come into the yard, or, I don't, I don't know. Does anybody think?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. And our alarm system in the school, is that, is it able to connect to camera, cameras?
I can get you that. It'll take my time to clean it up.
If we had an alarm, does that go right to the state police barracks?
I do so.
Okay. Because I was just wondering, I, I know they don't ban that 24.
Probably, it goes to, goes to a central call station, and they'll call us, they'll call the police.
Which is probably up in Rutland somewhere.
What, the central call station?
Yeah.
I believe it's actually Syracuse, New York.
Oh, you're kidding? Okay. Makes sense. All righty. But we don't need any action necessarily or anything.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else got anything?
Yeah, I guess I'm not a big, I wouldn't be a big proponent of cameras without knowing a little bit more about what the problem is that we're trying to solve and whether cameras are actually solving it.
I, I think the only, the only reason I mentioned cameras, because if you watch the news lately, they've caught more people on, on the cameras that, whether it be murders or anything like that, they've, they've caught the persons or culprits that have been there. But I'm, I'm just saying if, to find out who it is, or to get a, for the sake of argument, if something happened here at the school and person, or persons were caught on camera, not that it would solve anything, but they would, you know, be able to go after somebody or have a, have a description of them, but, that's just me, but...
Would it be too much to ask? It seems like we're wandering a little bit.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of things on the table and a lot of things to consider in this area, but how about having Jeff boil it down to a list of real recommendations? What do we have? What's working? Like the question of where the phone calls go. I mean, so we've got definitive answers. And put your name to the recommendations that you actually think are practical and would make your staff and the school population as safe as possible.
Yeah.
Can you, just to...
Sounds good to me. Do that for the August meeting, I think, too.
Yeah. If you're convinced, I mean, it's...
No, I mean, I wasn't sure what we were doing with this tonight, as a matter of fact.
Well, I think we've, we've got it around a couple of times.
And there's a lot of things on here, and there's a lot of things I don't want to see.
No.
Right.
It really comes down to what, how you people feel about what's going on here, whatever.
I'd like to, if I don't have time by August meeting, some staff input on that, so maybe push it to September, if possible.
Yes. Sounds good. Okay. Superintendent.
I, I saw that you have listed for yourself, Fran, the state of the district.
Well, I'm going to refer to you anyway.
That's kind of, I thought we've got a tag team on that.
Well, yeah, because we have the Shasberry, but go ahead.
Well, there is a copy in your packet of the presentation that I did for SVSU, which is really the bigger picture of where the district is going. So, I also included in your packet Shasberry's results, because I thought you would be most interested in those. The complete results of all of the schools and districts is online, if you want to go on the SVSU website and click on the state of the, state of the district and state of the union and the kneecap results for this year. So, this was really a summary that didn't give a play-by-play of every school's results, but more about some of the strengths and challenges that we have overall, including our economic demands. I included a graph here of how the free and reduced lunch count has increased over the years. So, I think that your finding is affecting you here in Shasberry as well.
It's pretty significant, almost 50%.
It's pretty amazing.
That's, considering it used to be, not too long ago, 15%.
And some of the schools, this really evens out the curve, but some of the schools, it has been even more dramatic up into the 71%, 72%. It was, it's really striking. So, that has a huge effect on, on our families and our children. And the focus on education, I just included some of the, some of the areas that we are strengthening in our positive behavior support, in strengthening communication skills of children through their reading and writing development, active learning experiences, including, as Jeff can comment on, is our physical activity that we're trying to include in some of the classrooms, and smaller class sizes, which is a SVSU priority as well as yours. So, really, some of the pre-K and incoming kindergarten students are really showing that that, those programs are working. There is a new program called TS Gold that they're working on with pre-K students to, to assess their learning in pre-K. It's new to, new this year, but I'm sure Karen Burnell is, is going to share some of the data that she has seen about the early childhood programs and the improvement that that is making. And then, some people have questioned the K to six accomplishments, and, and are students ready going into the middle school? And the MAP scores have documented that, that, that the education is effective, and students are entering sixth grade with pretty good skills. And then, some board members have questioned cohort groups over time, so I included some information on that, as well as seven and eight and nine through 12 accomplishments. In the nine through 12, I listed an area of concern of the female students in mathematics, because there is quite a dramatic gap in the accomplishment of our female students in the high school. So, it is an area that I'm researching, and so, it's been a very interesting experience interviewing some of the students at the high school and finding out what works for them and, and how we can help to improve that. So, that was our SVSU report. And then, your Shasberry results, I think, show lots of ups and downs, and you have to consider that that is partly a factor of, that you have such small numbers, that the, the more data points you have, the smoother the curve will be in how you represent the data. But when you have small numbers, then there can look like dramatic shifts from year to year. And in some cases, there was no testing done last year, so that, again, is a gap in what we are seeing for results. But some of the areas that you can see are writing. There, there was some fantastic progress made in 2010, with 86% of fifth graders needing proficiency in writing, and, and that has dropped a bit. I think that Jim did speak about that and saying that he, he found that it, that they needed to be more vigilant, and that that really was a priority looking forward to next year. So, it's not, it has been noticed, and I'm sure Jeff is going to be working on that, too. And the math achievement is, has had its ups and downs, but it looks like it's, again, on an upswing. So, I think that overall, it's just helpful to know where we put our focuses for, for the future in our professional development and in our instruction.
We are due to revisit our action plan this fall. Those are the scenarios we'll probably be talking from before we even write that up.
Good. All set?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll give you a handout for the Vermont School Boards Association. I don't think Dave got one. It's funny, I tried to get on the SBA website, and, and I'm looking for the resolutions or the, or the SBA bylaws. Couldn't, couldn't find them, because I want to give some examples. And on the, you know, it's, it's basically resolutions on how we deliver education or fund education or the governance. And, and I wanted to see what other things were on there. Of course, I couldn't get into the site, so I said, "Okay." Well, knowing that you're here, so you can tell us what else is on it. But I, I'm trying to figure out if maybe going to... But I, I'm trying to figure out if maybe going to one board is, is a part of governance, because we are gonna be looking for a superintendent. And I, I can't imagine any more superintendents wanting to come here and, and deal with seven different boards, because it hasn't worked for years. It's not ever gonna work, in my opinion, because I've been there and done that. And it's, it's, I, I don't know. I, I mean, they, they want something, is this, we're supposed to, any of our ideas supposed to get to them by July 24th? And I didn't know what this board thought, what you think as far as funding education, governance, any, if you had any ideas on any of that stuff.
When did they, what was the date that they were looking for?
Uh, second page, it's on the, July 24th is when I, you know, you can email it with me, or I can, we can just email it to them. It's John Feick, Chair Resolutions Committee. But they, they've been asking all the boards to, you know, have a meeting and put something together, but if we don't have anything, we don't have anything. But I figured I'd bring it before the board and see what ideas you have. I'm looking at the governance thing itself. We gotta do something. We've been, we've talked about it for years, and maybe the time is now, I don't know. And maybe we'll just keep-
That's a larger issue with just the SVSU.
Well, that's true, but I mean, they, going to one board means this, this, this board is, how's, how's it gonna make up? How many members, I mean, on one board? Do you have 10 members? Do you have 30? I don't know. I, I mean, it's just, I'm throwing it out there. I didn't know what you guys thought, so. But I say, you, you can kick it around and, and email me if you have any ideas. And what other things do they have on the VSBA? As far as a resol, there is, I guess there's a resolutions committee. I couldn't even get that.
Oh, well, I don't, this is, this I have not seen, this particular piece, but, well, they do make resolutions, but it usually is, it's not that anything's binding, but their-
No.
-suggestions for how to help make improvements, and they do offer support.
Mm-hmm.
But I, I don't know where the consideration begins or ends in trying to look at your governance structure, because I do think there are some that takes some serious thought.
I mean, we've looked at it over the years. SVSU has also, but I'm just wondering, I mean, it's, it's like we keep spinning our wheels and nothing really gets done. But whoever comes into this, this system would definitely be better with one board than seven.
Oh, yes.
I mean, I think-
I can attest to that, Fran.
I mean, you've been there and seen that. I mean, it's just-
It's, it's an impossible job.
Right.
And it's not just that it's impossible with the seven boards and to manage all that information, but it slows the process of anything that you're trying to accomplish. And it really almost puts a lid on making progress, because, you know, your policies take forever.
Mm-hmm.
And hiring takes forever.
Yeah.
And I don't think that it's in a way that is to your advantage. I think that there are systems that you could put in place that would be much more efficient and simpler to run and more effective in the outcome.
It is definitely cumbersome. I, I just, I'm, I'm just looking for a better way.
I don't know if it comes through this channel, though, Fran. I think this is a broader-based statewide avenue to look at things that they may have input onto. The governance issue that we're talking about is, is more of a local SVSU issue.
Yeah.
Oh, are they talking about statewide?
Well, I, I think that's what the SV, VBA is actually addressing, looking for resolutions that they can-
Yeah, they want resolutions-
Put forth on, on a statewide basis.
Cause they, they take a vote at their annual meeting, which is on October 24th.
I think we've got two different paths here. One is the local level, that we should be considering changes at the SVSU level in the makeup of that board, in the governance of, of that district.
Well, didn't we go, last year, wasn't the consolidation process part of trying to make the governance-
The RED process, you mean? Yes, it was.
Yeah.
And the feedback from that, I mean, it dissolved, didn't it? It was-
It was.
It dissolved.
Yeah.
But it-
It did.
So Fran, when you say comments like that, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by-
They, they had emailed me this, to have a meeting with my board and to see, look at the resolutions, which, that's why I brought this-
I think that's the area you've left open here, Fran, is we don't have examples of, of what they're, they're actually doing.
Well, it says in here, it's how you deliver education, funding education, the governance, anything you feel strongly about, to draft up a proposal that reflects your board's views on any one subject.
And I suppose our board could be of the opinion that statewide-
Right.
-there should be 61 boards, or 63, whatever it is, number of SVUs-
Yeah.
And see whether the rest of the state is willing to go along with that. And the legislature keeps talking about trying to reduce the cost of education and, and, you know, it'd be interesting to see what the legislature thinks of that idea.
Well, I only brought it here, I said, to see if I had any ideas. If not, it's okay.
I do, I do think that they're, the way it's referred to so generally is kind of, they're referring to all levels of governance, so this discussion is appropriate too.
Yeah.
But I do, I think that the state also needs to think about offering some incentives to be able to reduce the number of boards, and then that will make people want to, you know, whether they fund more transportation, so that you can get your students from, in the outlying districts, that they can be transported more easily, or whatever, whatever it would be, that they could offer some support that would encourage boards to collaborate and, and become a single board, or some other structure that would serve, serve the purpose.
I mean, as far, as far as the governance, it's been talked about before, years ago, of having, having the principals in the building do more, for example, things that would be done at central office, that type. And I wish I had found my paper, so I can bring it in and, and show you, but I mean, it's to alleviate central office, and the principal will have better control here in this building, and vice versa, and any of the other VSB buildings and stuff too. So it's, it's just a part of sharing, but I just, I don't know, there's gotta be an easier way.
Yes.
Maybe the staff knows the easier way, I don't know.
Well, the RED committee couldn't discover that, that easier way. That was for sure. That was frustrating, that there was no ongoing appetite to, to try and put something different together. And, and so it is gonna be a challenge, but it's not gonna go away either.
Yeah.
I mean, here we are facing, again, a change in administration, that's gonna, we're gonna ask somebody to come in and deal with exactly the same thing the last administration found so frustrating, so.
It just seems like the individual boards aren't willing to change. They don't, they don't want to change.
That's exactly right.
We all want to keep it the way it is, and it's not functioning that way. And then we're constantly trying to put the blame somewhere else, other than, let's just look back at what we're doing as a boards and these individual boards, and so-
So what would it take to get individual boards like us to make that change?
Trust. You know, everybody, trust. I think it would be trust. I think everybody sits on their boards for the same reason, and it's always about the kids, and that's what we're hoping for. That's what we do, and we show up to these meetings every day, is to make it better for the kids. And there's some board members that are just constantly trying to find the negative, and it's, and it, and you can't break through it anymore, you know? It's years and years and years of mistrust, and it's really becoming quite frustrating to watch.
Well, we heard that with Catherine's assessment too, that she felt one of her failures was the inability to put the boards together, to bring the boards together under a more trusting relationship, more effective working relationship. So that's gonna continue to haunt us. And I agree 100% to you, and that's where it starts, but we need leadership that's capable of doing that.
Well, yeah.
Can we get the leadership first?
I don't know. We're, we're sitting here-
Throw the egg.
We're sitting here saying what, we're sitting here saying, who is going to come into this system and say, you know, make this work any better? You know? We have to help that person make it work better. I'm getting all heated.
It's hot in here, anyway.
And maybe, and I just do think that it's worth a larger discussion. I don't know what the stopping points were when you originally had the RED group.
Oh, God, you-
I wish it had a different name.
It was pretty much just an agreement that it wasn't gonna go any further, that-
For financial reasons or trust reasons?
Pretty much political reasons of territory. Every board wants its own, its own jurisdiction, its own control, and, and there's the imbalance, the perception of imbalance between Bennington and the smaller boards, who's gonna really rule the roost.
Representation, yeah.
That was an issue. But again, the conversation goes on. I mean, it's not something we can, we can avoid.
And again, it doesn't make sense to me, because we all end up in the same place. All, all these kids end up at MAU, and we're all part of the same community. So I don't understand what the big struggle is with the elementary level boards that can't let go of, cause this, these years are, you know, the fun years. It's the years that, when they get older, that we really need to focus and pay more attention, but these are the years that we can say, okay, you know, trust, let's trust that it's getting done.
And I think that one issue is, you know, the specter of a larger board deciding that this school doesn't need to be here, or North Bennington School, and closing one of the schools. And then the town of Shaftesbury not having saved for that, because it's district-wide.
Well, something like that would all go into your charter about, you know, how is the district as a whole going to operate and say that there will not be a school closed unless that town agrees to it.
Well, it's still a, yeah, they discuss it.
Right. I mean, in Massachusetts, they have large districts that encompass lots of small towns, and it's working, and, but they do have different clauses in their charter that cover those things that are important to everyone. And if it were a, a financial issue, or maybe the towns, you could still have your own board about sort of the day-to-day operations with the principal, and then there was a larger, there was a board at large that was more, you know, talked about educational concepts and what, what is happening in the schools to stay on track for school improvement. But in some way, connecting those things, but sort of defining the tasks. I think if you, if you went through your agendas, you would see that there are some tasks that are distinctly yours, and then others that you could collaborate with a larger service organization.
Right.
And I think that, you know, there could be ways that you could sort of chip away at it like that and try to make a better functioning system that was more efficient and effective.
Let's not go to, the, the next phase is when we start to look for another superintendent, when that time comes. But I'm of the belief that we need to find somebody who takes that as the, coming in the door, understands what the problem is, and is totally committed to resolving that, above and beyond most other things, other than the day-to-day things that have to be done. And, and somebody sees the challenge in doing that, and, and will put a tremendous effort into accomplishing that. I don't see the individual boards work, coming together and working. That was our opportunity with RED, is to all get together and try to find something that works better than what we have. And, and that's behind us, it didn't go anywhere, so what's next? And I, I put it on the back of leadership. We need somebody strong in that position that says, this can change, and I will lead you to that change.
But those, but boards have to stop digging their heels into the-
That's part of it, Jen, is to break down that, that resistance, and it's not gonna happen on its own. It's not gonna happen with us trying to initiate it from, from this time, I don't think. If it can, fine. I'm open to the change, I just-
I think it does have to come from us.
Well, you put it together, you-
I, I, nobody can. No, nobody can.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So it falls to the task to someone else who comes in and says, you know, I'll find a way, because obviously we can.
Anybody else take a stab?
I'll take a stab.
That's why I'm glad she's down there tonight.
You asked for it. Okay. Is there any other? Your next meeting day is Wednesday, August 14th. At 6:00, unless somebody wants to meet earlier, but I, we'll leave it at 6:00. And you got your budget status report enclosed, and we need an executive session for personnel.
We do?
Yes.
Okay. For personnel?
Personnel.
Okay. Move we return to executive session.
Need a second, Jen?
Second, Jen.
All righty. All in favor, aye. Okay.
You anticipate action?